I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And to this world with liberty and justice for all.
It's two o'clock. I'll open the session at this time. Anything different on the agenda?
No changes?
And we'll start with the first one, the advisory board reappointment recommendations.
Okay, whenever we met myself, Jay, Denise, and others met with the advisory board last week, it was very apparent that everybody that is still there needs to be reappointed. And then we have several open positions. So today, in front of you, you'll see Denise has written in problems are there, need to be reappointed. And then we'll work with the people reappointed that we've reappointed to fill the open positions. Denise, Jay, and I, primarily Denise and Mary will work on that.
Correct. There is one change that they all need to make on the bylaws. However, that needs to happen because CCSN F doesn't.
Okay, so we need to do that. Was you recommending we do that today to Denise? Is the change of bylaws or how they come back from the advisory board?
I think it's pre-cut and dry. We have to make the change, so it's not much of a discussion.
The mental health advisory members needing reappointment would be Sheriff Taylor, of course, he used to be the previous sheriff in Bill Macombe, Charlie Tracy with DHS, Randy , other consumer, Jane Korea, juvenile services, and Randy Harrison, schools district number seven, both also need to act. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to appoint those that the chair had mentioned.
I'll second it. Most of the late sentience, any other discussions on those? All invited?
Aye.
Most cares. And then as far as filling out the vacant slot, that'd be the solicitation process. Right, Denise?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll move to take CCSN F off as one of the reading part of the RFP that's no longer in existence.
I'll second it.
And with that, the bylaws will reflect that.
Okay, most of the late has mentioned. Any other discussions? Paul and Mary?
Aye.
Most cares. The other item is request for proposals, outpatient comprehensive provider. That's through the RFP that's been processed for a while. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah. And welcome Kimberly Lindsay, our interim director, which has helped with us quite a bit, and Vicki Wignerson in the back, also some employees over there. We've all reviewed this.
Commissioner, before you go on, Judge, I have just joined us. Very interesting.
Okay, welcome Judge. And so this was sent out in a draft form to Doby to completely go over. And Henry O'Keefe, which is the attorney for Doby, went over this. Kimberly's been over it many times. The staff at mental health's been over it. Denise, myself, and Jay, is this incorporates one change that Vicki brought forward to this, doesn't it?
Yep.
And did we get any other response?
We did get other ideas and thoughts from other employees, but they were all things that are going to just have to be written into the contract that we have with the contractor. Not really appropriate things to be trying to include in the RFP. Certainly things to want to consider when we get to that point, but.
They're not specific that you write into the RFP. That's specific that you write into the contractual agreement, whoever does the response to the RFP.
Yes.
Kimberly, you have any more to add to it? I know you've put quite a few hours into this yourself.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to share that now?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we don't know what it is, so how can we say?
So here, the proposals are due back on June 10th. How quickly do you think you'll act on the proposal that's there received?
Well.
Is that a comment or a question?
Well, that's a question. Thank you very much.
We know where you're headed.
Commissioner, channel.
Well, I was looking at the contract with you that goes to the end of June, so there's some emphasis. But as far as how quickly we respond, it depended on the quality of the proposals.
So I can say, I can speak to the contractor CCS. That would be helpful if that's bearing on your mind. So I've been fairly candid that as long as, well, this isn't the end all, but as long as Chris is here, then I'm able to stay. And that doesn't mean that if you left that I'd be gone, but that's pretty significant for me to have the boots-on-the-ground person that I know. So as long as Chris is willing to stay and other things don't happen, which I could, you know, kind of list off other things, and some, and you guys have heard some of those other things, is we've had some reactions, I've had some reactions to some events that have happened. So just owning that, we would be fine extending the contract for a period of time to allow a respondent to come in. So I'll just state that, and then maybe you guys could go back to the question that I pretty much didn't make clear from the commissioner's account, putting that out. So how, so if you get the responses, how quickly do you think you'll act on the responses? Make a decision.
I'll give you my thoughts on it. Kimberly, we need to do our due diligence in this once we receive them and evaluating the committee. People that need to be involved in the evaluation before this board makes a final decision. So as quickly and as completely as we need to do that and can do that would be my answer.
Well, so Jay, you know, said that he knows where I'm going with this. I like to hear that. It's not a, as I'm just preaching to the choir, it's not a light matter that you'll be entertaining. And it's also a very significant matter for the respondent. So once you make a decision, which could be a week or two or three after you get the responses back, once you make that decision, then they're going to need a period of time to transition. And so I am not, like, I'm doubtful that if you left things as they are now, then even in a good world, that you get your responses back by the 10th, and that they would be able to start by the first, just being candid. Even somebody that was just ready to go, boobs on the ground, had all their licenses and was ready to go.
We had this conversation in the advisory committee, and we thought, whether that's correct or not, is that within the mental health world and the networking is that probably the people that's going to respond to this RFP probably is already aware of it. So we were pretty comfortable with the June 10th date.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fair enough. So that's pretty much okay. Now, as far as transition, I think that's, we've also said that our best guess would be July 1 would be very hopeful, but is that real? And then we never, we haven't had a chance to visit with you of the transition time from whoever responds. There's going to have to be transition time from CCS to whoever took over, and that's going to, I mean, there's going to be a double over for a certain amount of time. We just haven't had that conversation with you and Chris, Kimberly. So real aggressive would be July 1. Realistic, where we think in hoggies, that's just talking openly. Is that realistic to you at all, or what do you think?
I don't know.
And this is news to the board because of, I've been working on this with Jay and Denise and the boys and the advisory, with very few updates to the board here.
Right.
Well, it was obvious to me that the respondent is June 10th, and their contract is June 30th. So it's obvious that you're going to be.
Yeah. So if Chris isn't here, and we would be putting him on the spot, but I think that...
This is still draft form. We can change that July 1 date right now.
Well, he'll be in in a few minutes, so we will put him on the spot, and I'll ask him if he's fine staying. I mean, that's kind of then what we've talked about, is that we would, that we would stay. I have a couple of thoughts on how you can structure this after whatever the start date is. You could have like a soft start date and then a hard one. So a soft would be you're paying the administration of the new entity to begin work actively. And the benefit to that is that they've signed on the dotted line. And the hard start date is the date that they fully acquire and take over and all the employees of Lake County Mental Health become Lake County Mental Health employees. That's not, candidly, I've not seen it done that way before, but that doesn't mean that it can't be that way. And I think there are benefits to doing it that way. And you negotiate a rate for that. Or you could just have one go-live date. And they're going to get paid for their previous investment, right, on the go-live date. Does that make sense? So it's not like they're out of money. It's just that you're signing them on sooner than later.
So Kimberly, let me ask a question around that, so we don't have to wonder so much about a date. What would be wrong in this, unless it's in here, that we kind of ask in this process when they would feel most comfortable starting?
You can't do that.
So instead of us setting the date, allow potential bidders to set the date.
Well, has anybody read this? It says the contract is anticipated to start July 1st, 2016, and will cover a period of not less than five years. The county reserves the right to amend this contract for additional time if it is the best interest of the county.
I just think that...
I don't know if, maybe I'm reading out on the best additional time. Maybe they're talking about the five years, or could they make that for additional time for the July 1st?
I think it could go either way, how they interpret that. And my concern is that an entity may not respond because they think there's no way I can get up to running by July 1. So I think if you clarify the, you know, where you're going to tack on the additional time, just you could just move that around. Or you could say respondent needs to be in to take over operations no later than, unless approved by the county court. So you could go with something like August 1st or September 1st unless approved by the county court, and that would allow them additional time if necessary. I don't...
The contract is anticipated to start July 1st, 2016, unless otherwise negotiated. Going to be that simple?
I'll put that vote negotiated to benefit of both parties.
Yeah. We don't want anyone not submitting a proposal because they're afraid they can't use this date. It shouldn't be hard. It should be hard in the sense that we'd like you, whoever you are, to come and take over and so forth, but let's make it a smooth transition.
Yeah, put negotiations to benefit of both parties, but have it definite, but not to exceed the definite due date out there, so it doesn't go forever.
So that was a pretty good comment.
Question first.
That is pretty good, Kimberly. So.
I think we need to, because of, this special meeting today is to approve this, if that's a question, we need to get that verbiage in there right now. So.
So how about what Brad said? This contract is anticipated to start July 1st, 2016, unless otherwise negotiated, not to extend beyond August 1st, 2016, or whatever date that is. September 1st.
Yeah, I'd go with September 1st.
I'd go with September 1st.
Does that kind of accomplish what you're talking about? All right. So I want to go back to your question on comments, because he is the judge, has talked to both of us before, and I think he may have some comments.
Okay. Well, are they on the RFP, Judge?
Yeah, that's what you're...
If they are on the RFP, let's get through Kimberly's questions first.
Go ahead.
Unless it's on one of the subjects that we're talking about, one of the subjects that you bring forward, Judge, then weigh in at that time. I'd like for the interim director to get it through.
Sure, go ahead.
I think that, so I haven't seen it since when I worked at it, so I'm just quickly perusing. I know that I, my initial comment, I believe, was probably, I made it nauseous because I sent back a feedback. Maybe I sent it to all of you.
Very good.
Hey, how's it going?
So I need, at the top, what's in red, outline how this organization proposes to involve the board, and whether or not they're going to use any subcontractors in their involvement in that. Did you make a decision?
No, didn't talk about it. But I think the idea was that we were just going to, we wanted to find out what they, what they intended to do, how they intended to accomplish that without laying out, you know, what we're going to require.
And one thing that's missing there, Jay, unless I'm mistaken, we talked about that, that would be an ex officio on their, on their board, not a voting member, because the board commissioners would be the mental health authority. Didn't we have that conversation, Jay?
We did. What section is that?
Page nine at the very top in red.
I don't have that version. I have the final version, so.
It's at the end of section five.
This is the one that Denise just submitted.
This is one that's in the... I get it. So outline how the organization proposes to involve the board of county commissioners in the decision-making process. In parentheses, seat on the board of directors, order the meetings with commissioners, et cetera. So basically, they're asking the contractor how they propose to do that and give commissioners updates rather than state, here's what we're requiring. So you're going to, because it was in red, Jay, I wasn't sure if that had made it into the final draft. So you guys are going to ask them to do that. That's good.
Is that, is that accomplish what we want?
Yep. I just wasn't sure if it was in red, if that meant that you were still thinking about putting it in there. So no, that's great. Okay, no, that's very helpful. I'm going to just...
Well, he's gone because you were committed to the next two years to serve Lake County.
2018.
We negotiated down to one year, so.
We filed your residence to purchase.
At a reasonable price. So I don't have anything more, but we did a quick point, two places to put you on the spot, to be candid. So what we talked about right before you came in was the start date. And I had just conveyed that the responses are going to be due back by June 10th. I think that July 1 might be fairly aggressive, maybe not enough time to do, either for the commissioners to make a good decision, or for the respondent to really do what they need to do, be up and running. And they were basing the July 1st timeframe based upon the contract that CCS has with the commissioners and is June 30th. So what I had said is that my ability to stay here is dependent upon you. And so that's not a new conversation for you. But that we could extend the contract if you were willing to stay until they had a new entity. And so what they did was they made, they've made a discussion, although they've not voted on it, to have a start date of no later than September 1st, although they're hoping more like for July, maybe potentially, but hopefully it's something like August.
So a decision wouldn't have to wait until that September day?
Wouldn't, right. So they'd still make a decision.
It just creates open time, a transition.
But it gives the respondent the time to do what they need to do.
I follow.
Is that okay with you?
You bet.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we weren't quite sure we had that latitude, so that helps.
You are now a reported member of Lake County.
Are you sure you know what you just committed to? We never said like here, we're going to set September.
He hasn't signed anything.
We love you, Chris. Did I tell you, hadn't Kimberly?
That was it, yeah. I looked over it fairly thoroughly beforehand. I've probably taken something to hand tonight, but no. Do you want to?
So I'd like to hear from the judge, Mr. Chair, yes?
Well, I would say I don't know who's on the advisory board, and I don't know what discussions have happened with them, so I'll start with that. I, I mean, there's a lot of, one could certainly be critical. I guess I look at it as an opportunity at this point. That's the way to look at it. I don't know who you've included in your discussions. You know, like Jake and I were thinking of seeking a grant for additional alcohol treatment. So I just don't know how all these things and all these players out there fit into this proposal. I just don't see it. And I don't see how you involve them. I, but maybe that's to come. I don't necess, I don't know, but I don't necessarily agree that it should be put, just be out for contract. I was on the mental health advisory board in the 1980s, so I've been digging around with this for a long time. I think the level of service that you have provided at this point, from my perspective at the courthouse, is the best ever. I remember when Lutheran Family Service was here, and the level of services wasn't as good. So I don't necessarily know that this is the best way to go, and I don't know that it's not the best way to go. And do we have an alternate plan in place if we don't get a good proposal? What's, what's the parallel program? Because what if we get back on July 1, and somebody says, no, I heard the June date, we don't have anything? Are we starting on a different course, or are we working on that course in parallel fashion? And then the thing I don't see on this is what services are they exactly providing? It says contract must also comply with other contracts in place, batteries, anger management. How do, how do they know? How, shouldn't we be saying these are the services we want you to provide? Or instead of just saying you will provide, well, what will you provide? Shouldn't we be dictating what they're providing?
Well, I'll probably botch it. I'm going to give it my first shot.
Okay.
Within the mental health world, the budget itself, our dollars that come down from the states, our federal dollars come down, and those dictate what programs there are and what dollars are available for that. So this is, I guess, what you'd say generic in that form, but I put the faith in what programs we have and what dollars that those programs are directed to is what they'll be providing. Because they're going to want every bit of revenue coming in by that. And I don't know, that's probably botched up, but we have two professionals here. We have Vicki also here that, you want to answer that?
Vicki, do you want to? I always have things that I can say, but I'd like to...
You don't redirect. Go ahead.
Good question. Well, I'll just say this. I, there are times, I, when there was no batters program here in Lake County, if people went to Clamath County, there was no sexual offender, people went to Clamath. Them or they, we've, I mean, we've actually required, I mean, it's skewed. We've actually required people to live in North Lake County to go to Clamath to get their sexual offender treatment, batters, when they could so much easier just go up to Le Pine. And so, I mean, I've, maybe that's changed, that maybe the mental health people now are required to provide those. But I've seen times when it certainly wasn't local. We did not provide those for local. And I'll turn it to an economic point. Why would we not want to have people in our community that provide those services that are employed here instead of people that are employed at Clamath County or Deshues County? I mean, I want, I really want my services to be, I want my administration to be local, I want my services to be local, and I want my, as a Lake County staffer, I want my services to be here in my community. And so when you start contracting out, and I don't know what the proposal is, and don't get me wrong, I understand the difficulty of getting good mental health professionals to come to Lake County. I fully appreciate that. Those are issues that we have always struggled with. But I don't see it here.
Once people move here, then they are local, Judge. But over the years, there's been contractual agreements made, and the dollars weren't there for some of these programs you're talking about. So we teamed up with other counties or whatever. Now there is more dollars going towards a lot of these programs, which made it for that it's affordable for people to provide some of those services here. So dynamics have changed financially. Contractually, we've been able to do a few things. There's more dollars coming in. But over the years, that's some of the reasons why we, especially back whenever we, on adult corrections, we had a contract with Clamath County to be our director, and was able to take some of those programs and stretch those dollars the best we can to get the services on the ground.
Adult corrections is a perfect example. I think it's so much stronger now, now that you've taken it over, set a contract in there. It's so much better. And if we've got more local control, we've got more people, and it's better. That's the perfect example.
I think when we point you to the advisory board, you will see some of the places that we've been weak over the years. Some of the things you've dealt with have been very strong.
And I said, I will not be on the advisory board, but I will be part of the process.
I think as we're moving forward, we're going to have and work towards having one of the best mental health programs Lake County seems. And I believe that, or else I wouldn't be working this way.
I know. But other programs, you mentioned the sexual and the battering. We worked hard to get those here. It took staffing with expertise and qualifications, and we don't really have that. But to get a contractor to give, I see your point that we need to identify.
Well, I just don't know if they're going to provide this. I, I mean, it says batters.
What's your thought?
Anger management, anger management is pretty generic.
Anger management, yes.
It's generic. It's a very generic program. I don't, I just don't know why we're not asking them to provide it. And they won't say we won't do it, then. I guess, but I, you know, I don't want to see this.
The RFP says on page five, the contractor must also comply with all other contracts in place, batters, anger management, credible electronics, medical records, systems, et cetera. This was brought, I didn't find that. Vicki's the one that brought that forward because she understands that all the contracts we have in place now, we want to keep them in place. And so that verbiage there made me comfortable that all contracts we have now will be kept in place by this RFP. And so it's not spelled out every single one that we, we have every single program, but that verbiage there makes me comfortable. And whenever you have employees come to you and say, we need to make sure we keep this all in there, it makes you look even more comfortable.
I think that I would be calling them, say, what contracts you have in place? I was going to put in a vote.
That's probably what will happen, and et cetera, we'll get through all the other additional ones.
At the same time, we need to make it clear that those services, the contracts, be provided locally as opposed to Clamath or someplace else.
We're sorry that signed the contracts now. And I mean, we keep all contracts here local that we can, but sometimes in our positions, in other positions, you sign contracts. It's not just local contracts. I want to be cautious by making promises that we may be sitting here as a board and not fulfilling that. That's made in business. A lot of times we contract. I mean, our building department right now is a prime example, so.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So, and like, before I, you know, like, I have this link at you. Rob, is it okay to call you Rob by Judge?
The Honor.
Yeah, maybe honor the word.
I have to call him His Highness.
So, it's just the way I was raised.
By a very good mother, I love her.
By a very good mother, and, you know, in a small force service community with a southern gentleman, that was always, "Yes, ma'am," and "Thank you, ma'am," and "Please," and "Thank you," and all of that. So I'm not going to be able to answer most of what you said, and I can't, and I'm not the gentleman in power that have the ability to address a lot of what you said. I support what you're saying, I want to say that, and I just can't be effective when it's delivered locally, and it should be a part of the continuum of services. So I can only speak to what CCS has done, but we're not here to talk about CCS, so I just want to say that I support that. What I was getting at, though, when I mentioned earlier, or we were discussing on page nine, the role of the commissioners, I think that that's key for you guys to have an ongoing role. You can be a part of the board or not, that's going to be your prerogative. I understand the conflict of interest. I would just say that I have had acting commissioners on the CCS board without any problems. But I did have one county, Moro County explicitly just said that they didn't want to because of conflict. But Wheeler and Grant have had commissioners on the board. So they need to abstain at key times, obviously, there are conflicts that are present. Anyways, oh, that's a key place for you as commissioners to have involvement. You can write out what you're going to write in the contract, and that's going to be good for five years. There's going to be new things that come up, though, like, should we set up a therapeutic foster care home? And where should that contract be? And you can set up a home in Clamath County if you wanted. There's nothing that says it has to specifically be in Lake County, but, but your involvement is where you have those opportunities to have those conversations about placements of services and provision of services being local, so just.
Judge, did you have other concerns?
I don't have any other time now. I honestly, this is, it's an opportunity. I could look at it from negative, it's an opportunity, and so, and I guess mildly, I think I'd said this 30 days, I just involved the community partners and look and see what's, what they want. We'll see where it goes. And I, we need help, so, I'm not saying we, your county needs help.
I really, I'm not a commissioner, but I really value your comments about the quality of the services that have been being delivered and where it is now versus where it was. When I first kind of got a little involved in Lake County, and it was back in 2007 or '08, not really formally involved, but just listening to the half of the family services. So I witnessed from afar some of the challenges, and I think that Vicki and the rest of the staff have done an amazing job with building services up and getting enough to the community. So we don't want to lose that capacity and try to clean that.
And just for the audience, I'm afraid, when Lutheran Family, they were strong when I came on. We're not saying anything negative about the company, Lutheran Family. Things just wasn't mended well here at that time.
Why, I don't necessarily think, I don't, again, you're just asking for somebody to come in privately and do it. And all I can say, and I understand this may be done throughout the state, smaller, our county is unique, we're providing services 100 miles that way, and we're a long ways, we're longer from other major metropolitans than almost any other community. Just because it works in other cities doesn't mean it'll work. I just don't think it'll necessarily work here, just because it happens. And I'm just saying, I've never been close to one or the other. I want what's best.
Well, I think that's the key part.
We have.
That's what we all want, and we don't have the secret answer. We, you know, I think I talked to you about it related to this, and, you know, I wasn't being facetious, but in Eastern Oregon Coordinated Care, 16 counties, 15 are doing it this way. So my only question, and that's the one that's not facetious, what do they know that we don't in this day and age? And so, that question needs to be answered.
Correct.
But the end product is providing quality, good services to our citizens, that's the baseline. Whether other 15 counties does it different ways, what will we provide, that's the baseline.
I see tons of opportunity in Lake County, tons of opportunity for more services than what you have now. And some of those services that I see opportunity for are things that, if I were to bring them before you as commissioners to get approval on, you would, you know, you turn green. I mean, it's things that are, require you to dance in different arenas of healthcare. And so, so that's one of the benefits, is that you'll have domestic violence services and batters and anger management and things that you've never had before, like potentially a therapeutic foster care home or respite care, or maybe you want to build an acute care facility here someday or a couple beds off the hospital. And then when you, when you guys get the liability insurance bill for that, you're going to, you know, probably fall over. You'll see terms that you've never seen, and, and, you know, it's really very interesting. So when you think about economies and economies of scale, there's tons of opportunity for additional jobs to come in, more peer work, more professionals that would be living in your community. However, you may have a provider that's not local, and will they really know your community? And I absolutely understand, Judge Rob, your concerns. I'm, I'm one of those private providers, and all four of the counties that I work with, and I'm scared to death of not having a contract and having a new provider coming in that didn't know the community the way we knew it, that would turn it upside down and not do a very good job, and wouldn't really be local. So, and I've heard that consistently from the commissioners, wanting that local entity, people that are going to come in and have roots on the ground and build roots in the community, and their kids are in schools, and they're frequenting the restaurants, and those are all very important things. So just trying to find that balance.
That, that's the reason why we're here today, Kimberly, is because of, I believe this board of commissioners is wise enough to know that there's professionals in the administrative part of the mental health that can take it to the level it needs to go to. And that's the reason why I'm pushing and working so hard on this. Boards of commissioners are not mental health experts, and I believe that where we need to be today is have the administration in place, take it to the level it needs to go to for the clients and for our communities. And just hearing you speak there, it's like, there it is, that's the aha moment for me, is there's people like you out there that are professionals in the field, administrated the lots, and all the things that come along with it to be able to get our community where it needs to go. So as individually, that was an aha moment for me that I've had several times here. Chris knows, as I've been working through this, and as I said it so eloquently, whenever he said courts or board of commissioners really don't know much about mental health, they don't get involved very deep as a role. So the best way for us is a board of commissioners to surround ourselves with the best administration to make that happen, and that's where I hope this RFP can get us. As far as having Plan B, or the other, I have some things I personally been thinking about. I'll visit with Kimberly and Chris and the team after this meeting, but the best case scenario is get a good response to the RFP, Judge.
And my question, what if we don't get a good one? What are we, I mean, aren't we back where we were? Managing locally, you're doing it ourselves, and I just, are we going down that parallel path? And maybe there's not the time and resources to do it, but I don't know how long we can wait, how's that? Are you putting in a bid?
That's confidential.
We haven't got, we haven't got an approved RFP yet, so you can't answer that.
I just want to say, well, I want to say, I understand why you're here, and I'm not critical of anything. I mean, I understand you're here to want the dam, and so, don't take that as a comment of, "What do they come out independent contractor?" I understand.
I didn't take anything.
You shouldn't, I just didn't want you to think it. Just trying to see where you're at.
So I, I've, I've been pretty candid with the commissioners at different points on this continuum when mine has shifted. If I could, I would be here permanently in a heartbeat because of the opportunity that I see to turn it around. And then if somebody wanted to take it over from there, which I'm not, you know, it's not like what I think of, because along the way, then I get really invested, and, and I love the four counties that we provide services in, and I'm very possessive of them, I hope that's okay.
And she loves Lake County even more so than the other four.
So, I, I like taking a program that is struggling and turning it around, and I think that, that that's, I hope it doesn't sound arrogant, but I think that that's my track record with some of the counties that have asked to join CCS. I, my, my hands start to ring when I think about the distance between where I am physically and where I live here. It took me six hours to get here this morning, it was a beautiful drive, but I'm a hands-on person for a while. And that's my, that's a part of my struggle, and then needing somebody that I know that's on site and that I can put my trust in, and I don't know a lot of people that are willing to go to Lake County and stay there and be the site manager, and hence what you're talking about, is, you know, the difficulty in recruiting sometimes. And, and not for profits, have a little bit more flexibility with the wages that they can offer. So, so that's potentially one benefit.
You don't have to answer it.
Well, I'm just.
It would just be yes or no.
Right now, I would say we, we likely won't, but the board will be looking at the RFP that's coming out and, and talking about it, and looking at the existing staff and capacity and everything, so. I'm just an honest person, and I'm not known for being brief, that's also my.
I'll say, Henry works for you?
I work with Henry, I'm on the GOBE Board of Directors, but I don't work, Henry doesn't work for me or with me in that way, yeah. But Henry grew up there.
Yep, see, that's, that's part of the filing of the mental health system, Henry. You also don't know him well. You can tell him.
All right, we, we will.
Wife and I are very good friends. Oh, it's a good deal. I know, good friend as well.
So I, I believe with all our discussion, we have the one change. Could you read that change to the introduction here, the contract anticipated?
Contract is anticipated to start July 1, 2016, unless otherwise negotiated, not to extend beyond September 1, 2016.
And Chris, as it went to September 1, you're committed, as the site manager here at CCS, we will get the contract. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Chris.
And Kimberly, thank you very much. And there was no other verbiage change throughout this? There was question, I think we answered it, where the all contracts on page five will be honored? I think that took care of that question. Is there any other scribbler changes to this by anybody?
No.
Well, Chris has a good point. So then, let her be, as be able to become registered and certified as an eligible provider within 60 days. Likely that's something that you wouldn't get upset about if they were trying to become certified and the state wasn't able to meet this timeframe. So I don't know that you have to change this, but you could change the wording to "registered and certified within 60 days or as soon as possible."
As soon as state rules, or state on compliant, or a property.
The state certifies the program.
Talked with Henry Hill-Cape about this issue, and he said, he spoke to a couple, the two other entities that did this, and he said that it took one of them two weeks, and he thought 60 days was certainly doable, so.
I know what he's talking about, and that's like a perfect situation. I just think you, yeah, and, yeah.
Well, I don't think there's anything.
So it's an arbitrary timeline.
Henry came up with additional verbiage.
Yeah, we could add that verbiage based on, based on state certification.
So does anybody have a proposal for language that would make this more flexible?
Certified and eligible provider within 60 days or following the state timeframes? Because the state's one that certifies them, correct?
Correct.
If somebody, if the state would allow them to go an extra 30 days, we should allow them. If they're working at it and there's just something there to, is that where you go on, Chris? There could be, let's say, a brand-new, not brand-new entity, but an entity, entity that has never done mental health is trying to get certified, it might take them a little longer.
Right, in other words, they got to compile a bunch of policies, they compile all these policies, they send them in, and the state's like, "Oh, but we actually just changed the rule on one of those things, and you actually have to have a policy on conflict of interest," and it wasn't in there, and, you know.
So we got the state of bureaucracy of the state functions. We do have a state employee.
Would it be okay to just simply state something like, "It must be working toward becoming registered and certified as an eligible"? That wouldn't put any time period, it would just be, I mean, they're working.
Seems like they have to be done by September 1, 60 days. That's not necessarily necessarily, if you're going to start up, they got to be registered.
Well, I asked Henry that question, too. I mean, could, could it, do they have to be? He said, "No, they can take over as the contractor, as long as they're working towards this." Is that your understanding of that?
Well, what if we just put it that they become certified by the state guidelines? Within the state guidelines?
Within some timeline. Yeah, what, yeah, that's, that's the question.
Well, I would think that the state would say you have to be certified within a certain amount of time. I don't think they would let you be a provider forever.
What if you just duplicated the wording that you have on the first page?
Okay, something like that.
If not already certified, they'll be certified by September 1, and has to otherwise, mutually agreed upon by the commissioners, if they're having a hard time getting the state to come out. So they're going to have their stuff that they need to do, and the state's going to have to do a desk review minimally if they're a new provider. And then the state's going to come out at 30 or 60 days post-licensing due to have a review.
I'm sure hopefully tracks on with the authority of licensed provider, and that's not an issue.
Yeah.
But as, there's a, in GOBE, this is, this process has happened, and as Henry indicated, it happened pretty quickly, so it can be done.
So must be able to become registered and certified as an eligible provider by September 1, 2016, unless.
What's it decided?
Unless the dates mutually, whatever you had for that first.
Unless otherwise mutually agreed.
Must mutually agree to about the two parties.
Okay.
Anything else before I make a motion?
No, this isn't.
I'm not, I'm.
Go for it.
So I'll make a motion to accept the RFP, the draft RFP, with the additions, corrections that we have, and to go out for what we've already decided, but I just need to accept this, and it will be submitted shortly after this meeting.
Second?
Most invited. And second, to go up with the RFP and with the corrections or amendments, everybody. What do you think of that speech, Jake? What do you think, Judge? As far as it makes me...
Three oh five? Yeah, today. Yeah, right. Three ten.
Three ten. Only if we negotiated. Any other discussion? I'd like, I mean, next item is potential case management position.
Oh, let's, let's talk about the contract.
You want to do the contract first?
Okay. I tell them we only have a little bit. We haven't...
Interim Director Contract, Modernizations.
With CCS.
I added some things to the contract, which I already skied on, or we already mutated.
Yeah, I think they've, they've all had, seen and copied this. Just things that have come up that we didn't anticipate, you know, ahead of time. Things that are just necessary, I don't know, go ahead and go and see, maybe just answer questions.
What is your thread as well has been changed, correct?
Yes.
Added to it.
I don't have it in front of me, but going off the top of my head, I did change the, I reduced, took it from sixty days to thirty days for notification.
Kimberly, how can you, how can you do that?
Because I've been very nervous. If Chris were to leave, or we have more staff leaving, it's CCS's license.
Okay.
So I knew that, I mean, if I were you, that would be the one that would give me angst too.
It did.
So hopefully, so I can understand your angst, and hopefully you can understand CCS's, and hopefully we don't, you know, have anything kind of fruition that calls us, causes us to discuss it.
Well, I agree with you, because you have to protect your organization too. Hypothetically, if something went south and we did not have a replacement, what would be the county's option or options at that time?
At the end of the thirty days and you haven't found another insurance provider, then in the new contract that the state has with the CCOs, the CCOs would be responsible for the provision of service, finding somebody to provide it. And I haven't read that contract recently, the new updated contract between the state and the CCO, but never read the initial one, or that one, and I, and that hasn't been tested.
Hasn't happened, huh?
Yeah, Clamath County, didn't they, it turns back, the state had to find a provider, didn't they? Am I mistaken on that?
No, you're right, you're right. The state, but the state never contracted with Clamath County. There was never an initial CCO contract, and Clamath County did give it back to the state, and there was an entity that had been wanting to step forward and provide the services. The CCO down there had been wanting to provide the services. The county never signed the agreement for that. They never supported that CCO coming in and taking over. They wanted to remain their own entity, and so the CCO was contracting with them. So, so yes, in some ways, Commissioner Winters, you're right. It has been tested, you're right. In some ways, there was, I think, some pretty significant differences.
Unique to that situation.
You guys still want to be the local mental health authority. Clamath County gave it up, and that's the part that I don't know, how that's going to shake out if that were to happen, if you had nobody. That's the part that I don't know. I would think that you would still be able to be the local mental health authority, because I don't know, you know, I don't know. Because you're, you're kind of saying we can't do it, and you're in default of the contract with EOCCO, so I'm not sure.
Well, I appreciate that you're taking care of the board and CCS very much, so I'm not going to lose a lot of sleep on this because we're going, we're building every day, we're getting better. Did give me angst when I seen that. In our advisory meeting, we went from hourly worries to weekly, as Chris pointed out, to Chris, is that we're gaining our employees over there, doing excellent job. We're doing a lot of things. It's right to have angst from this, but I believe we're already making some good process for, progress for it. So I'll accept it with that it's new beginnings, it's the start of something new, we're going to find.
I'd love to remind you, Chris, I already promised this.
Well, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good indicator right there. It's true. Well, the weather's getting better, the golf, golfing might be better.
Just that, of course. The mountain biking is better too. The small print gives to gear, that would be to worry.
So the other items, I'll just speak on quickly. I skipped down to the provider termination, assuming that one would generate more suspicion. As Jay said, since we first put together the contract, the amount of CCS presence and things that have came up has increased. And so, that, our clinical director has been involved, I sent him down here for a few days, hoping that he reimburses, but whether he would or not, I thought that there was a lot of things that he could do to be helpful for Chris, and I think that's, showed itself, and you've received a pretty comprehensive report. It's not, you know, I mean, he says at the bottom, there are other things, but those are things that in the contract, you guys can use it at a later date to measure how your new provider is doing. So I just thought it was good for you to have in front of you and for us to be mindful of. We've been talking about other contracts, for example, with Clamath County to provide some crisis services. I just threw Jay's name in there as the one that would approve those on your behalf if CCS enters into a contract, you can change that. Hiring some clinicians that could be CCS employees. Trying to find clinicians within CCS to provide some crisis coverage on the weekends. That's, I've read those briefs by Jay, they're, they're very mentioned, it's an incentive for people to come, and I'm trying to make a heartburn to say no. So that's what I was getting at mostly, in age, as well as if we hired any full-time clinicians. And then given the amount of additional things that I'm asking our business office to do with the contracts and the reimbursement fees, I put in a small admin fee, I hope you feel it's small, I thought it was small, but there's something to pay for their time and money. The contracts isn't, contracts and invoices, that are going.
So Kimberly, this is how I looked at it, I was going to question on the thirty days. There's a cost of doing business when you sign the original contract. We can capture all the costs of doing business. Now you're trying to capture those, I think it's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
And you stepped up during an emergency meeting to help keep us going, keep the community safe. So I'm with Commissioner Shannon also, that we couldn't capture everything right at that.
Nope. It was, it was under eleven hour and fifty minutes financial contracts.
So unless I'm getting ahead of the discussion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this CCS contract amendment as presented.
Second, your motion.
Motion by, by the second to accept this CCS contract amendment as given? Any other discussion? Kimberly, do you have any other discussions?
I don't.
You? In all favor?
Aye.
Now on to the potential case management.
Okay, this was one of Brad's aha moments in the advisory committee meeting. I had no concept how important a case manager is for the number of therapists we have. We have therapists that are doing case management when they should be meeting with clients. And it became very obvious to me that this would make us much more efficient over there. And the picture finally was painted for me, and so Jay went right to work on this, trying to get the job description put together, trying to, or union over there, so we have to deal with the union. He has, he's been working with Brent Jensen at the union. What we need to do today, what I would like for the board to do today is to go ahead and approve this position. This would be a county position contingent upon the salary range that's agreeable between the union and Jay negotiating that. Just so we can fast-track this, we need to, and we have some different ideas on case managers, management possibly that Jay and I can run by Chris and Kimberly this afternoon, but this is something that's...